So, given that I'm standing between you and lunch, my goal is to try to get you to forget about lunch, because I have a long presentation. And by, but hopefully, I'll be giving you some food for the brain. So, all the systems are being created that you have just heard about, because there's a lot of different kinds of patient data available, and we actually need some kind of repositories. But what I will be talking about is methods, machine learning methods, and the state-of-the-art in integrating all of this data for analytical purposes. So, just to give you an idea, the kind of data that I myself have seen for a different number of patients starts with genetic mRNA expression, epigenetic microRNA's, protein expression levels, clinical data, a lot of different kinds of clinical data that is being collected, questionnaire data, especially for the neuropsychiatric disorders, imaging data, and even diet. This was the case in IBD and malnutrition studies. So, this is a fun slide that I borrowed from Jana. The capacity of the doctors, well, the human capacity to process information is about five facts to make a decision, right? And we are talking about thousands, tens of thousands to millions of variables for each of these data sets. So, we need to integrate the data to make some sense of it, right? So, the main advantage of us as computer scientists and how we can help these data dilutes by taking advantage, by bringing some kind of a message out of all of this heterogeneity. And one of the very important questions that has been asked in a lot of different diseases, not just cancer, is subtyping, so identifying more homogeneous subpopulations with essentially the same diagnosis in the clinic, and how to distinguish between them, and of course, to help with predicting which drugs to give to the patients. So, the history of the method development in this area, in the area of integrative analysis, is relatively recent, but is filling up quickly. So, the original approaches, they kind of looked at single individual data sets, one at a time, trying to use that and then use other types of data to validate some of the findings. The more common analysis now are to use various pipelines to directly integrate a lot of the different kinds of data. And I will also mention some of the machine learning approaches that are trying to do it automatically. So, the original, some of the people who work in the cancer area will know this paper, is a glioblastoma paper by Verhaak. And this is a pipeline. So, every study that comes out has a pipeline that's different from the previous pipeline. And I don't have a sense of how to evaluate them to tell you that, yes, this pipeline is the best pipeline. It's just every time TCGA or another consortium comes out with a paper on subtyping, for example, they use a different pipeline. So, they use a lot of different factor analysis, latent-based models, then the cluster evaluations using silhouette, et cetera, and some method to identify the best genes that related to the cluster. So, in that example, they actually found some clusters, identified four different subtypes, and they said, these are the subtypes in glioblastoma. But they actually, that study had mitelation data, but they didn't use it. And there was a comment, one line in the paper, saying that they couldn't find any kind of signature from the mitelation data. What they missed is a very, very important subtype, the IDH1 subtype, which has a very clear mitelation signature. But because it was gene expression-driven, they couldn't actually find it. All of these patients, it's a very small proportion, maybe 10% of the patients were split among the clusters. And so, there was, the follow-up study has identified this signature in the hypermitelation study and used some unsupervised consensus clustering. Didn't even say exactly what it was, but, and constructed consensus matrices and identified a different set of clusters. I will quickly go through some of the machine learning approaches that are currently available. One that stands out is a paradigm. It's an approach in really gene-centric and pathway-centric, where they use the available pathway information for structure of a Bayesian network, and then for the importance of a pathway while integrating mRNA data, microRNA, and mitelation. A lot of the different methods are either Bayesian nonparametric methods or kind of multiple kernel learning-based methods. And if you're interested, this slide will be available, so you can see all of this list. Method that is very commonly used right now is iCluster. It's a regularized latent variable regression model. And they have extended their approach multiple times to try to incorporate different kinds of data as well. At ISMB, I already heard several other ones, such as Amaretto, that came out of Stanford, and the tri-matrix factorization by Zetnik and Zupan that integrates all kinds of data. And in our lab, we have developed two additional approaches that integrate all kinds of data. And one of them is NMF-based, simply because NMF, non-negative matrix factorization methods were used for subtyping before for single type of data. And we just wanted to help those individuals who are already familiar with those methods to integrate all kinds of different type of data in the same framework. And finally, I will talk to you about the similarity network fusion, which is a completely different approach from what we, from the other ones that we developed and published last year. So, the drawbacks, the main drawbacks of the existing methods are that there's a lot of manual pre-processing. There are pipelines, and it's really hard to decide which methods to use in each of the different steps of the pipelines. A lot of the manual pre-processing comes from the fact that you need to do feature pre-selection. So, a lot of the methods are probabilistic. They cannot work with a full feature set. So, you have to pre-select the features. That's potentially biasing the study. Maybe it's helping to find the signal, but if the signal is eliminated in this pre-screening, then the signal is lost. And also, a lot of the studies focus on, are more suited to the consensus. So, if you have multiple data streams of data for the same patients, a lot of these studies, for example, iCluster, does better if there is some kind of a consensus message between all these different data streams about the patients, rather than some complementarity. And the complementarity is actually very, very important. So, the method that we have developed is based on patients. So, if you have multiple different data streams for the patients, what we proposed was to use, to represent each of these data streams as a network of patients. So, here, each node is a patient, and each edge represents how similar they are in that space. So, in mRNA expression, the edge would be there if they're similar, have similar profiles in mRNA expression space, et cetera. So, this is the first step. The first step is to construct all these networks for all these different data streams. And the second step is to integrate them using a nonlinear method. So, I will not talk about the first step, because every one of you have done this before. It's just correlation or Euclidean distance between patients given a profile vector. But I'll mention how we combine the networks. So, once the networks are constructed, what we do is simply, it's a random walk. The intuition is that it's a random walk, but across graphs. So, you start in the first graph, you continue in the second graph, and you go back to the first graph. And that's how you make them iteratively similar. So, this method is provably converges to one single network, which is supported by all of the data that we originally had. The, one of the big advantages of this method is that the data doesn't have to be gene-based. So, if we wanted to integrate some clinical data, or if we wanted to integrate imaging data or questionnaire data, we could still do it in this framework. So, this is, doesn't matter. If you have multiple, many multiple, many networks, rather than two, you start in one network and then walk through the average of the others. So, just to give you, I want to give you two key messages. The paper is out there, you can read it if you want. But I want to give you two key messages that we have found. So, this is a real data in glioblastoma from TCGA. And you can see that all the networks are kind of different for these different patients. But once we have constructed a single network using our method, you see that, first of all, the noise kind of goes away a little bit. So, the off-diagonal noise is less than in a lot of these different data sets. But more importantly, and I think most importantly, is that even though there are more visible clusters, these clusters are still connected. And within clusters, there's quite a bit of heterogeneity, right? All of us know that cancers are heterogeneous. But it's not just cancers. A lot of the complex human diseases are incredibly heterogeneous. And they're not, we are trying, we keep trying to simplify it. And I think networks is one way to try to to not have to discretize this information. So, you can go within a cluster and see that some of them are, some of the patients are similar due to microRNA profiles, and some of them are similar due to microRNA and DNA mitelation profiles. And the reality is that these patients will respond differently to the same treatment, and the doctors have to know that. And that's why I think this network-based approach is the future. And the doctors really like it, because essentially, that's what they do in their brain. Another point that I want to mention is that, is the feature selection. So, going from the discrete subtyping, so just a cluster of patients, clusters 1, 2, 3, to the network made us think about how should we do actually feature selection? Because what the usual differential analysis do is they say, well, is the distribution of this feature different in cluster 1 versus cluster 2? But it doesn't say anything about how the patients within the cluster are different, or any kind of more refined similarity information, right? Because patients within the same cluster can be quite different as well. So, what we did was, we simply used a normalized mutual information and looked at each feature with respect to how well does it reconstruct the clusters itself. And this way, we have come up, and this is a heat map, not a big fan, but it's a heat map, but with no pre- or post-processing, no plane, that we get some much more homogeneous sets of features. So, this is not a solved problem, just so you know. The features, and especially integrative features, that are explaining why the patient has the disease is not a solved problem by any means. But this is one way that I think we should start thinking about how to compare, and what is the distance between patients, and how to select the genes that are relevant. We had similar results in five different cancers, so I'm not going to really talk much about it, much more about it. It's in the paper. So, this is the diagnosis, right? But what about the prognosis? So, trying to predict something about the patients. The idea was, again, to try to use the whole network. So, going from the clusters and trying to squeeze this person who is not quite like cluster 1, or cluster 3, or cluster 2, and squeeze them into the cluster they most likely, or take them away from the clusters they are least likely to belong to, rather, to use the whole network to predict the information about that patient. So, what we did was, we did some analysis in breast cancer, which is a Metabrik study, which has a lot of patients. So, there's a discovery cohort of almost 1,000 patients and a validation cohort of almost 1,000 patients. And what we looked at, we looked at the question of subtyping, so clustering, versus using a network, and predicting survival. So, we looked at two measures, the p-value of the discovery cohort and validation cohort, and then this concordance index. And for those of you who don't know, it basically captures how well we can order patients with respect to their survival. So, are we putting people who survive longer in the right order with respect to the people who do not survive as well? So, we looked at the five clusters versus 10 clusters and compared to the established, this is a clinical signature, and this is a more recent nature paper that said, no, there are not five clusters, there are 10 clusters. We looked at five clusters, so we made a network, clustered it into five clusters and 10 clusters. And what we see is that the reality is, it's basically the same. So, it's definitely better than PAM50, but it's not because it's five clusters. It's because the signature is very limited with the 50 genes. So, what we said was, okay, maybe it's not about the subtypes in cancer, in breast cancer, it's really a very heterogeneous disease. So, what we did was, we took a COX objective function and just augmented it with a regularizer, which says, if the patients are far in the network, we want them to not have the similar survival. And the patients are close, they're not going to be so penalized. So, it's the same network, this here in red, it's the same network which we clustered here. And it really improved the concordance index. It really improved our ability to put the patients in the right ordering. So, the key message here is that the network and looking at the pairwise similarity of patients gives us a lot more information about the disease and how to predict the outcomes for the patients than just trying to squeeze them into the different subtypes and different clusters. That's why I think that patient networks are the future. So, some of the disadvantages of the patient networks is that, again, at least our approach, it doesn't provide you with an integrative feature selection, right? So, we can give you a ranked list of features that are important, but it's not giving you the mechanisms, the mechanistic kind of function that would explain why the different patients are in different similarity groups. The growing of the network is also different. So, for the growth, if you have an additional cohort, you will want to re-establish your network. And if we want to start making predictions about how different patients will respond to different treatments, this is, again, another problem. And it's a very interesting problem, because we don't expect the patients to respond, the same network to be actually, to be able, it wouldn't be right if the same network and the same, built on one similarity would be predictive with respect to response to one drug and then a completely different drug. So, that's why we, this is actually an open problem, and we're working on it, and other people are working on it as well. But what our method definitely does is that it creates one unified view of all of the underlying data for the given set of patients, integrates gene and non-gene-based data, which is very important in a clinic, because clinicians are used to relying on the clinical data a lot, and they trust it a lot more than the transcriptomic data, at least for now. There is no need in our method to do gene per selection. I didn't talk about those results there in the paper. We don't, so we can analyze the gene sets after the fact, after we construct our networks, but we don't need to do gene per selection. It scales really well. It runs in seconds on thousands of patients. So, the package is available, it's in CRAN, in R, for those who want to play with it. And I have heard that some people are, which is very exciting. But I want to tell you, since it's a translational kind of track, I want to tell you my experience in working with clinicians directly. My office is in a children's hospital, and I worked a lot with clinicians to try to address some of the burning questions that they have. And these are some of the examples of the collaborations that I have in applying this in similar methods. So, obsessive-compulsive disorder, where they are trying to figure out the heterogeneity essentially of OCD. The juvenile idiopathic arthritis, where once they started looking at the genomic data, they realized that the clinical subtyping, which is currently used in the clinic, does not correspond at all to the genomics. And so, now they are trying to do it kind of a joint, establish joint disease taxonomy. Another very interesting question that somebody has approached me is this kind of trying to identify whether lupoid hepatitis and autoimmune hepatitis are actually the same disease or not, because they see a lot of patients that are misdiagnosed with one or the other, depending on where their pediatrician had sent them, through which clinic, different data types get collected. And so, we are working on that with a gastroenterology fellow. I'm actually particularly excited about this, because the gastroenterology fellow has used our SNF tool herself without any computer science training before. She used R for the first time in my office. And I'm really excited about it, because she is doing the analysis herself using our tools. So, and then there are other kind of similar type of questions. So, I'll give you two vignettes of sorts, something that was exciting to us. So, in the juvenile idiopathic arthritis case, we had 88 patients, which is fairly small cohort. So, if you have a probabilistic method, it may be a problem to have so few patients. But we were able to construct a kind of a network, which you can see that there is a lot of similarity between clusters as well. But we had data for the two visits, prior and post-treatment. So, treatment naive, and then after the treatment. We had mRNA expression, cytokine levels, clinical data, and immunotherapy for all of these patients. So, what we looked at, we looked at all the different signatures across all of these different data sets. And of course, with immunotherapy, it's really, really hard. You have a million variants, and it's hard to figure out which ones are right. But what we noticed is that, in the first visit, these are the five different clusters that we had. And there was this one cluster that had really profound kind of cytokine levels. All of the cytokine levels were really high. And we thought, okay, maybe it's a batch effect. Maybe it's from a different hospital. Something, something is wrong here. But it didn't seem to be the case. And so, when we looked at the second visit, and we started looking at all the different kind of groups, in all of the groups, group 3, 1 and 3 that I'm showing here, the cytokine levels went down, even if they weren't all that high. In the second group, nothing. The cytokine levels, there's a particular signature of six cytokine levels, that basically stayed at the same level. And so, we started talking to the clinicians, and we started checking out other types of data, immunotherapy. And it turned out that this was 12-patient group, 12 out of 88, and 11 out of 12 patients had a mutation. They had a germline mutation in an IL-17 receptor. And this was super exciting to our rheumatology collaborator, because there are so many drugs that are being tested right now in the clinic, in clinical phases. Of course, the IL-17 receptor drug was just called off because of the suicidal side effects. But there's an IL-17 drug, which is in a clinical trial now, which actually affects the IL-17 receptor, makes the levels go down. So, this is kind of the, as close to the clinic that we're getting right now, being machine learning person myself, it's an incredibly exciting situation to be in. So, integrating beyond the omics data, I just wanted to give you kind of this example for the obsessive-compulsive disorder. We had genetic imaging and clinical questionnaire data. And what we did was, we had, again, not very many patients with all of this data available, but we started looking at these networks, and we found that, at least in this particular case, there's, as the clinicians actually suspect, there is a kind of a continuum of a diagnosis. It's not just this discrete clusters, but there is a continuum. But even within this continuum, there are some subclusters in this network that are associated with very, very different profiles. So, one has a, the cluster 1 has a very high total coded volume. In cluster 2, the obsessive-compulsive scale is actually particularly low. And then cluster 3, the lifetime history is the one that comes out. With very small number of patients, we didn't expect anything to come out, honestly. But it seems to be significant. These are only the significant results. And even the, even the, some of the SNPs are becoming to be important, but we would need to replicate that to be sure. So, with this, I want to kind of conclude with the challenges. The challenges, the computational challenges, and introducing our methods in the clinic. So, I believe that one of the biggest challenges right now is the discovery of integrative features. So, paradigm, for example, it tries to do the integrative feature discovery, but it relies on existing pathways, which is a noisy, kind of poor annotated, still not well enough annotated set. But beyond that, there are not very many methods that actually address this problem directly. For non-cancer, you have to be really sure that the tissue is coming from the right, that the data is coming really from the right tissue, right? In some of the cancer, they do the biopsies, and you can get the data from the right tissues. In a lot of the different non-lethal diseases, not life-threatening, but just really debilitating disease, they don't do biopsies. They just take kind of fluids, biofluids, blood, and urine, et cetera. And so, we have to be really careful as people who do the analysis to kind of think about how to process the data so that it makes sense and we are finding the right signal. If we want to take DNA and genotype and integrate it directly, there is a bit of a problem. So, we can't really correlate patient DNA profiles. You will get hair color and all these things, right? So, you, broad profiles, broad metrics. So, what you really want is either some kind of pre-processing, and of course, there are all these methods for variant annotation. But we have to be clever about how to really incorporate into the data integration tools. For now, this is not done a lot. I've mentioned the network-based predictive models. And something that I think is starting to bug me as of recently, but really bug me, is that we have no benchmarking. So, people come up with integration. There is a new TCGA paper every, often enough. And there is a new pipeline, maybe some new tools, and maybe some better tools. We don't know. We don't know which tools are better, which tools are worse. Some of them have more of the properties that we want, and that's why we use them. But we need some kind of a benchmarking or some way, validation criteria, classification criteria for these models, saying, if this is this type of data, you should be using this type of integrative approaches. And in different cases, you should be using different differences. And none of this exists for integrative approaches right now, as far as I know. As far as challenges implementing this kind of machine learning tools in the clinic, I'm actually really happy to say that clinicians are open to machine learning, regardless of what people think. I work a lot with clinicians. They are very, very happy about the network representation approaches and other type of approaches. The caveat is that if our methods, usually as machine learners, if our methods perform better, X percent better than some other method, we say, oh, it's a good method, why don't we use this in the clinic? But in reality, they said, well, your method only has 90% accuracy. 90% accuracy means that 10 out of every 100 patients that I see will be treated in a completely wrong way. I cannot do that. So, I don't know, I tried to kind of have a sideways argument that the doctors are not really doing better than that. But the, it is a real issue, right? Because they're saying, if computers are involved, and we are not making this decision directly, then we better know how accurate they are, and that they are really, really, really accurate. Otherwise, we are not, we might be skeptical about doing that. And it will stay in the research. So, clinician, researchers will still use this information, but it will not go to the clinic, will not go further to the clinic. So, integrative tests, even with few heterogeneous markers, are still very expensive. So, clinicians prefer tests that are kind of cheap. I'm from Canada, there's not a lot of money in medicine. And the cost of the test itself to each patient is very important. And if it's different types of data, so if it's DNA mitelation, or even this integrative features that are really exciting, I think, from the machine learning perspective, it will be still quite tricky of how to design a test. There will be some engineering chemistry involved, how to design the test so that the cost is appropriate. Okay. With that, I would like to thank my collaborators in my lab. The work on SNF was largely done by Bo Wain, who is now at Stanford, and Aziz Mizlini and Fayaz. And these are my collaborators across the different diseases that we are applying our methods.
Any questions for Anna?
I'll answer both, it's okay.
Thanks, Anna. So, back to your last point about cost of things. So, what's sort of minimal data sets, questionnaire, blood sample, urine sample, from any one of those disease states, could you do to get the same network separation of things?
So, that's what we are trying to do actually now. So, for example, in major glioblastoma, we know that they're happy with some of the mitelation tests. So, we are trying to figure out whether we can do it in, using mitelation data directly, and how the accuracy would compare if we just had one data compared to all of the data sets. But without actually having done the fusion and knowing the accurate, kind of the best accuracy, you don't really know how well you can do. And that's, that's kind of what we are trying to do in some of these cases.
Well, thanks for the nice talk. I'm Jan Baumer. I wonder a bit about whether you do permutation tests. I mean, if you randomize your class labels or you randomize the survival times of your patients, whatever, would you still be able to learn predictors or run your clustering tools with similar parameters and still find something? I mean, that is what usually hinders us from moving with our markers, whether they are network-based or not, to move from clinical, well-controlled study outside to the real world?
Yeah, so the kind of questions, at least the methods that I have described, they really, you have to really separate the goals here, right? There are no labels. Or at least clinicians want to really truly find out what are the more homogeneous subsets of populations. It's a really unsupervised question. They just want to say, in my set. Now, once we have established that, what they want to do is they want to know how well can we classify into those subtypes, right? How can, well, we can classify patients. And that's when the, the cross-validation and the randomization really plays a huge role. And so there, we really care about not overfitting. So for example, if we have used any information about the labels in the construction of the networks, we would not use the same data. We would just collect a different data set or initially separate the data set so we can do that, kind of build classifiers that classify people into those classes. So it's a, these are different questions and they're evaluated differently, obviously. Yeah.
Okay.
Very nice talk. I have a question. So I really like the patient-based network. But also they, if I understand correctly, so the whole approach is unsupervised learning, right? So how would you guarantee that when you're doing the clustering, the network, different modules are formed based on the disease subtypes or treatment-related rather than some other irrelevant features like say gender and so on, age?
So we usually, in, in a clinical, I shouldn't say clinical setting, a clinical research setting where we are really collaborating on a small data set with clinicians, we always check the effects of age. So age, gender, all the confounders. So there, there are multiple ways to proceed, right? One, one, you can say, well, the age is really an important predictor, clinical predictor. We know the age and if it makes a difference, we should use it. So in some cases, they insist on using the age in the network to try to distinguish. And within, then within a certain age group, we want to see the heterogeneity. And sometimes we just say, wait, wait a minute. This, this will not be useful in terms of, you cannot treat all women the same and this is the strongest signal you have. So we remove it from the, from the confounders and we check for all of this confounding effect, of course. So a lot of, a lot of times in some diseases, it really, so in some diseases, it's kind of, kind of a validation, right? It's always hard to evaluate an unsupervised approach, but it's kind of a validation. And diseases where they believe, where they have seen the effects of age and gender and other confounders on the, on the outcomes, we kind of recapitulate that as well with our groups. But in cases where we don't see that, we also do not see the effects of those variables. So they're not always the strongest. It really depends on the disease and not just on the cohort.
Yeah, the other question I have is that, so, because very nicely you have like, from the clinical perspective, directly in the network, classify patients. But in the end, like I say, the biology, people still want to see some molecular signatures and so on. So how would you retrieve those like learning results from the network? Because that's based on patient, like a global, whole organism level information. How would you still learn the biology there? What is the main driver, gene module and so on? Or a subtype, subset of the whole gene that, that drive, drive the classification?
So it's, it's a very hard question, right? And that's one of the reasons why we separated that. We, we said, we don't actually know the biology and because of the heterogeneity of disease in a limited sample size, detecting that mechanism may be really, really hard. So we have other work that goes directly to try to identify a disease mechanism. It's a talk I gave on Saturday in a very, but it's, in this, in this particular work, as I have shown, we use the normalized mutual information to identify the features that are mostly associated with the clusters. It seems to be the case in, in the clinical data sets that we have tried, it seems to be kind of validating in a, in an independent cohort. So these features, they remain and they, they are still significant in a lot of cases. So we've, we've had it in myocytosis and medulloblastoma. But it's, it's a very, it's a very, very hard question. It's not a solved question. I, what I want is I want a mechanism of a subtype, for example, and coming from these networks and it's not, it's not done yet. I think it's a, it's a very interesting, very interesting machine learning question that, that we need. I have to say that in terms of, in, this is for unsupervised approach. In a supervised approach, we are using some of the pathway information as, as priors to figure out which path, pathways are most important. And that's a, not finished yet.
Thank you.